We're gathered here on March 19, 2013, at the City Hall 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And at this time, I would like to call the council to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Brad Fry with the Tolu Church of Christ to do our invitation, followed by the pledge allegiance to the flag and also the Texas flag. Please rise.
You pray with me. Our Father and our God, we're grateful for the opportunity that you blessed us with to come together tonight to celebrate the democracy that we're able to have in this country. We're thankful, Father, we live in a free land, and we are appreciative of the rights that we have to come together and to discuss the business of the communities that we live in. Father, we pray that you will bless each person that speaks tonight, the debates that will take place, the discussions that will go on. We pray that all things will be done in a good spirit of neighborliness, and we pray, Father, that you will bless this community to glorify and honor you in all that takes place. Father, we pray that you will continue to bless Mayor Pratt and his recovery. We pray that you'll give him strength and bless those that are tending to him and give them skills that they need to do their jobs well. Father, we glorify and honor you. We especially are thankful for your Son, Jesus, that gave himself so that we could be right with you, because of his resurrection that gives us an everlasting hope. Help us, Father, to do all things to your pleasure. These things we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to read a couple of proclamations that we have tonight. If the recipients are out there, if you could just come forward. The first one we have is the Autism Awareness Month, and I think it was John Hall out there. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the city and the community of Compton are dedicated and being a wonderful place to live and raise a family, and whereas every family faces challenges that require faith, love, and hope, and whereas it is known that the proper education, training, and community living options individuals with autism can lead distinguished productive lives in their communities and strive to each their fullest potential, and whereas autism is one of the fastest-growing mental disabilities in the world costing billions of dollars, and yet service options lag the needs for those impacted, and whereas our community supports increasing awareness of this challenging disability and fair funding for research and services for those in need, and whereas our city would like to commend Lake Point Academy Incorporated in private non-patological theoretical elementary and middle school in Granbury and Lake Point Research Center Incorporated, the volunteer organization which supports the academy, and whereas Lake Point is designed for students with academic, social, communication, and behavioral needs, one of the focuses being children in the autism spectrum and their families, and now therefore the city of Granbury would like to show their support of April as the Autism Awareness Month, and encourage Granbury citizens and businesses to join buildings and landmarks around the world in lighting it up blue on April 2, 2013, if only with a single blue light in each storefront, building window, and supporting of the residents. And mind you, the whole month of April is the Autism Month. Thank you. Our next proclamation is the Poison Prevention Week. There you go. And we got a recipient of that, Poison Prevention Week. We'll get it to him here. It reads this, it reads such, "Whereas our society has become increasingly dependent on the household chemicals to form labor savings, whereas these products, when not used in intended or directed, may be hazardous, and whereas over the past 51 years, the nation has been observing Poison Prevention Week, whereas the efforts of our community organizations complemented by the efforts of the North Texas Poison Center to have educated childhood poisoning in Granbury, Texas, whereas the North Texas Poison Center and Regional Poison Center located at Parkland Memorial Hospital provides the ultimate in human resources programming and all other emergency information, whereas these programs must continue as long as even one child swallows a household product or medicine by mistake. Now therefore, I, Nenhu, at the Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Granbury, do hereby proclaim the week of March 17 through the 23, 2013, as Poison Prevention Week in this city. Further, I direct the appropriate agencies in our local government to continue their cooperation with concerned citizens and community organizations, including our schools, to develop programs which will alert our people to the continued danger of misusing medicines and household products, and to promote effective safeguards against accidental poisoning among young children." Thank you. I'd like to say we will get that out to them. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Council, you've had a chance to look over the minutes of the March 5 council meeting. We are now, we'll approval of the minutes of the council meeting on March 5, 2013. Council, do you have any alterations or comments on the agenda items? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting on March 5, 2013.
A move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen. I hear a second.
Second.
Had a second by Councilman Couch. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes approved. We're moving on to the deliberation agenda. We now have the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the city of Granbury for fiscal year 2011 through 2012. We're going to call upon Ava Gregory to give us the detail on that.
Let me just say one thing before we get started. This is our financial statement for the city. It's audited by our auditors, our CPA auditors, and so this is the official document that determines what the financial status of the city is. So we'll turn it over to Ava. She's going to go through a presentation of components of that report.
Council, city manager, city attorney, city secretary, we would like to present to you the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as of September 30, 2012. This was a combined effort of the finance department and our auditors, George Morgan and Sneed. On the first slide, we would like to show you our valuation growth for the last five years. These values are received from our appraisal district, and you can see that fiscal year 2007, '08, '09, and '09, '10, we have experienced a large growth. In the last few years, this growth has stayed relatively flat. Currently, with the ending fiscal year, September 30, 2012, our valuation was at $1,041 million. The following slide shows you a little history on the sales tax collection. Due to an economic downturn back in 2008, '09, and fiscal year 2009, '10, we had experienced decline in sales tax collection of 6.3% as well as 9.9% respectively, but we were able to rebound in fiscal year 2010 and '11 where we are showing an increase of 9.5%. And for the ending fiscal year we're presenting to you now in 2011, '12, the increase was 8%. And we had ended this year at $6.3 million in sales tax collection, which represents the highest sales tax collection in the history of the city of Granbury. The following slide is just a quick summary of the property tax rates in the surrounding cities. City of Granbury listed as the lowest property tax provider between the cities surrounding The hotel occupancy tax chart or graph you see in front of you also shows that our hotel occupancy tax had decreased in fiscal year 2008 and '09, and 2009 and '10, 13% and 8% respectively, but was able to rebound in 2010 and '11, 10%. And we had closed 2011, '12 fiscal year at $516,739. It shows a slight decrease compared to the previous years, and that was mainly due to some of our bed and breakfast closings, and also one of our businesses, hoteliers, have converted their property to apartment complex. The following slide shows our strong economic base, and our strong financial fund balance position is really a measure of the city's financial flexibility to meet the essential services during periods of financial downturn. The unassigned fund balance for general fund at September 30, 2012 was $4.2 million. And the unrestricted fund balance for utility fund at the September 30, 2012 was $5.2 million. The chart shows you how over the years were these fund balance was in terms of dollars as well as the percentage of operating expense. We would like to also show you, I know this slide is small, how general fund performed compared to the previous year. So column one will show you the revenues and expenses in 2010, '11 fiscal year and compared to the current fiscal year we just closed of 2011 and '12. The first line, the property taxes have decreased about 1%, and that was due to our Sales tax, of course, shows an increase of 8%. Franchise taxes show a slight decrease of 2% compared to fiscal year 2010, '11, and other revenues show a decrease of about 11%. This is mainly attributable to decreased building permits and decreased developer fees. As far as the expenditure, the governmental, general government expenditure had increased about 13%. That was due to a purchase of a $200,000 plant, also investment in our computer information system department where we had invested in disaster recovery network and increase in other capital assets. For our public safety department, I mean, for our public safety, the increase represent about 8%, and again, that was due to some investments in capital assets. We had started the expansion of the fire training facility as well as invested in new police vehicles. Community development line item had decreased about 10%, and this is due to restructuring some of our departments. The building official was transferred to public works department. So you, for highways and streets, the expenses compared to the previous year of fiscal year 2010 and '11 have increased about 42%. That was due to a purchase of a street sweeper for $181,000, and also, as I mentioned earlier, the transfer of the building official to that department. Our culture and recreation, which is our parks and cemetery, have, expenses have decreased about 13%, and that was mainly due, we had purchased some land back in fiscal year 2010, '11 for the expansion of our MIT Trail, Moments and Time Trail, and we have outsourced Our intergovernmental transfers have increased for general fund in 2012 and '11, and that was due to our expansion of our tourism department with new staff, additional new staff, and also increasing our advertising and promotional expense line items. In overall, the net change in fund was about $360,000. This was added to the fund balance, and some of the fund balance towards the end of 2011, '12 was utilized, and we had invested in other capital projects like I mentioned, the fire training center, the dog park, mowers, and as well as the disaster recovery network. But all in end, we had ended with unrestricted fund balance of $4.2 million for fiscal year 2011 and '12, and this represents 43% of our operating expense. We have made the same comparison for our utility fund performance comparing 2011, '12, and 2010 and '11. We have a slight decrease in electric sales revenue of 1%. The water sale revenue represents about 17% decrease in revenue compared to the previous year, and that was mainly, 2010, '11 was one of our hottest years, and also it represents a sale of water that happened in 2010 and '11. The other revenue have decreased about 11%, and that is attributable to a lower impact fee collection as well as lower miscellaneous income. As far as on the expenditure side, our electric water and for resale, purchased power have decreased about 4%, and this is in line with the decrease in revenue. Our personnel cost increased about 5%, and most of this cost was we have expanded and added some new staff as well as the 3% merit raise. Supply and maintenance service line item have increased about 2%, and depreciation and amortization, 1%. These are relatively flat in growth. The operating transfers, on the operating transfers, you can see capital contributions. These are contributions what we receive from developers for water and sewer improvements. This shows a decrease of 76%. Last year, the water and sewer improvements that was donated, contributed to the city was $194,000, and that was for Abe's Landing Phase 4. The previous years, we were able to, the number was so much higher, 824,000 because of Luton Range, Racetrack, Old Mill Crossing, and Phase 2 in Catalina Bay. So that would represent a big difference in the number there. The debt service and interest expense have increased about 16%, and that is due to the new 2012 bond, revenue bond issue we have completed on January 2012. The increase for our utility fund, for the net asset increase, is $296,624, which gets our total net assets to $25,169,000, and represents 1% higher than the previous year. Our unrestricted fund bonds, as I mentioned on the previous slides, was $5.2 million, and that represents 36% of our operating expenses. At this time, I would like to introduce Daniel Hungerford. He's one of our auditors, and he would like to make a couple comments.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Hungerford with George Morgan and Sneed. I was audit manager. I'm also here with Peter Morgan, owner and principal on the audit. I just wanted to go over real quickly our reports in your CAFR. For September 30, 2011, the city's CAFR was submitted to the Government Finance Officers' Association and received a certificate of achievement, and we feel like this CAFR will also receive that certificate. Page 1 and 2 of the CAFR contains our independent auditor's report. We've issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion, meaning that we feel like the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Pages 109 and 110 of the CAFR, which would be the very last two pages, this is our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. This report says that we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control, and we did not have any instances of noncompliance that we were required to report to you. Our third report is, was separately not bound in the CAFR. This is called a required communication letter. It basically says that we had no difficulties or disagreements with management, and there were no other findings or issues that we were required to report to you. Overall, the audit went very smooth, and I'd like to thank Wayne, Ava, and the rest of the city staff for their cooperation and hard work. We arrived on the first day of fieldwork, and she has, Ava had files of information ready for us. We were able to come in and get the audit done, and we really appreciate that. Do you have any questions for us?
That, council, you have any questions for? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate.
With that, no action taken. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is...
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Could we inform the public that this is on our website?
Sure.
This is on our website. I would encourage you to go look at it to have a deeper understanding of the financial status of the city, but also in the back portion of this report is an amazing amount of information about our community, about all kinds of things, about the city utilities and just some really interesting reading if you're interested in the city of Granbury. So I'd encourage you to go to the website and look at this Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the supplemental data.
Thank you, Council.
Mickey, if I may, it will be on the website tomorrow. It's not on the website until it's approved by you, so we will be posting it on the website tomorrow.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the discussion and the status of the Opera House redevelopment project, and consider and approve any recommendations from the Opera House Redevelopment Committee. As you know, we're going to talk about this redevelopment of the Opera House as we move on with the remodeling of it, and we'll turn that over to Wayne, who chairs that, and then probably have Bill get up and speak also, Bill Scott.
Yes, our committee has continued to meet whenever we had to for specific issues, but right now, we're working with Bill Scott, and I think he has some important information to deliver to the council tonight.
Evening. Bill Scott, 908 South Stilbane, Fort Worth, 76111. The early package is submitted for approval at City Hall, the CBO's office downstairs. We expect permanent progress there, 2, 3. We'll stay in touch. The drawings have been submitted. We've submitted an application and a drawing that shows our mobilization effort that will begin Monday morning. We met the neighbors, talked to the neighbors about what we intend to do, what the job requires as far as egress and access to and from the proposed compound that we're constructing. Design-wise, we are currently working with the theater group on the theater lighting, the house lighting, house sound, air conditioning, and power requirements for same. We are scheduling a meeting to start discussing the finishes of the Opera House, and we're moving forward rapidly in several fronts, and that's kind of our weekly report. Any questions, maybe?
Thank you, Bill. I'm sure there are. Any questions, council? Well, you were saying that you would begin work on the 25th?
We're mobilizing Monday morning to the job site in accordance with the temporary construction laydown and office requirements downstairs at the CBO's office. There's a drawing and an aerial view of what we're, construction trailer, fencing, gates, dumpsters. We're going to start mobilizing some sand and cement and mortar materials for the repointing of the walls. We've ordered the, we're going to order in the morning the structural elements that tie the roof to the existing walls. We're easing into getting going, but yes, we're starting mobilization Monday morning.
Okay, but the reconciliation we talked about in terms of the numbers...
Reconciliation for the items that we're proposing and moving in is the repointing of the walls on the exterior facades, east and west sides, the demolition of the entire project, and the roof attachment. We're only over by the roof attachment. Don't have an exact number yet. The concrete looks like it's under. The roof attachment looks like it's over. The demo is under. The repointing of the walls is under. Exactly what that is, we're still waiting on a couple stragglers.
Yes, but you expect no added, significant added cost under what we had presented earlier?
We were talking in the $30,000 range for the roof attachment. We think it's going to be below that, yes, sir. All told, pluses and minuses, net effect should be less than that, yes, sir.
So do we need a ribbon cutting there, or what? No?
Well, we were thinking about a ground direction if we want to entertain that thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you will have people working on Monday morning.
We are mobilizing to the job site Monday morning, yes, sir.
We will see if we can get Shannon to orchestrate maybe a groundbreaking force up there, so that'd be great.
Happy to help.
Council, any more questions for Bill? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, I know you're saying you're getting people out there on Monday mobilizing. I used to be in commercial landscaping, and we'd take trees out, and a month later, we'd show up with our crew and start planting them. When are you going to have people actually, crews, subcrews, working out there?
We're bringing in the Mason Monday morning with our crew. They're going to start building a laydown area for where the sand and cement that will be reused, that'll be used for the repointing efforts. We'll be stocking the roofs with plywood and plastic and protection materials. We will build access to those roofs. We hope, we hope, weather permitting, by the end of the next week, that we've pretty much got that repointing done.
I know I'm not on that committee, and I know you're glad, but last meeting, you said that the roof deal came up, and you said that you estimated it cost around $10,000. Did I ask you a figure of $30,000?
$31,581 right now.
When are we going to have a total? I ask this every week.
Total of the construction project?
Will we know what that blank check's going to look like?
When? The job's been designed towards two phases, an early package to get out there and do what we can while the architects and engineers are designing the rest of the building. The other package is the completion of the product. The other package is the completion of the product. The first package is submitted today for permitting. We're going to work Monday morning on it. The second package, architecturally, should be done by next Friday. Mechanical electrical engineering usually drags a little bit behind that. When we get coordinated with the theater AV and our MEP loading and, you know, power and air conditioning and that kind of thing, it would probably drag another week beyond that. From that point, it's go to hard bid for the subtrades and probably give the subbidders two weeks to look at the drawings and prepare a bid proposal, submit them, tabulate them for GMP assembly or GMP preparation, and come to you with, hey, here's your revised GMP. All, of course, open book for y'all to see it, sit in on any time.
Right now, you're working off of a $3 million contract?
No, sir.
What are you working on?
$2,238,000, I believe.
$238,000?
Let's see. Two, $238,980 is the approved amount through change order one. Change order one was $40,000 above our original GMP based off the original architect's drawing. $40,000 added to the design budget to redesign the job. Our contract amount through change order number one is two, two, three, eight.
Is it two, one, three, eight, is that the first phase, or?
That was, apples to apples speaking, it was for the original set of drawings.
Well, that's what I know when those drawings are gone.
Yes, they are.
And my concern is this. Y'all, I mean, I want to get that thing open as quick as anybody sitting here or out there. But until we know before we're paying for this thing, how can you, how can you get started?
Well, real easy. We have a contract amount. We had criteria that was given to us that was, we were to redesign the building towards. We budgeted that job and told you it was roughly in the $3,40,000 range. That is not what it is yet, but that's what we've internally estimated that, the value of that floor plan and the multiple floors above it to cost. That's where, in other words, that's where we expected to come in, maybe a little less.
I understand, but the only problem, I only got one vote, I only got one opinion.
Yes, sir.
But here we are talking about 2.38 million, and you just mentioned 3,40,000.
Yes, sir.
Now, which one of those do you work in the numbers on?
The design, current design, which you paid us $40,000 on top of the 60 we carried for design, you're paying us to design towards the floor plan that you gave us, that we budgeted for $3,40,000. We're working towards that.
What happens, Bill, if you get started on this and say it takes you another couple months to get the final bids in? I think it will, and you do too, probably.
No, it doesn't. I think we're probably within a month from that.
Okay, let's say a month now, you come back to us and it's 3.5, 3.6. How do we settle up on what you've done?
Well, we would know along the way. That's the value of a construction manager pre-construction estimating. You're pricing the design in each level of its completeness.
What percent is that?
Well, we turned in 50% design development a week and a half ago, I believe. So that's roughly in the 50% mark. We're, you're going to be seeing probably a 75% complete set. We're budgeting to make sure everything's in line. Like the concrete package, we told you it was going to be, I believe, in the $201,000 range, $202,000. Right now, it's $185,000 plus, whatever we've got to do when the civil engineer comes on to design, help us design whatever grades are in the parking lot. So right now, we're about, you know, $20,000 under budget.
Yes, sir.
Based on the floor plan that we built the budget off of. We don't expect it to come in here at 3.5.
No, I understand, and that's where I'm going with this, Bill, is that we've got, you get paid, what percent for over CNS?
5%.
And what do you get for saving money? Safety come in, like you just talked about there, $15,000 under. Do you get 30% of that?
Well, that's not how you, how the, I guess the industry operates. There will be pluses and minuses all through the job. There'll be 300 line items in our budget. Some of them are light, some of them are heavy. They are pluses and minuses. At the end of the job...
I think, I think what Councilman, I think what Councilman Allen is looking for here, and I've been looking for it also here, is at what point, or is there a point when we will be able to set on a high bid, you know, where a maximum bid where it won't go over that bid? Am I right, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Will there be a point? I mean, I was led to believe that at one point, we would be able to have that with you and so we could...
Designs are completed and then put out to bid. The subtrades bid the drawings. They furnish proposals to the CM or the DB or the GC, whoever's taking the bids. They assemble them into a final price that, in this instance, they come up with a guaranteed maximum price. Basically, the same thing we did off the original drawings. There's a GMP contract in place that defines how cost is, well, how cost is defined. It also allows for savings clauses, which is, I guess, your original point. Once the job is finished, if there's any savings that are a fair equitable way of splitting it, we'd split it. And I don't remember the terms of what, 75, 25, 70, 30, something like that?
730.
Yeah. We're 30, we're 70, we're 30, you're 70. Hey, we're used to zero, zero us and 100% you.
I like that better.
Well, you had the choice.
The reason we're asking that is, and I'm not picking on you because I think you are the man for this job, I really do. But we voted back in November for you to get started on it, on the plans of 2.2, and you said you could do it at that, and you probably could have with those plans, but they just didn't work. They weren't your fault, I understand that. But we wasted November, December, January, February, March. That's five months. Not your fault. But I think we've got to set some dates on these things and not ever two weeks, say, next week this is going to happen, that's going to happen. And I agree with you in 100%. If we don't know what our real cost is on this thing, I mean, we just went through an earlier budget on utilities, trying to figure out how maybe move money out of general funds to have to say, well, we're moving money out of general funds for the Opera House. So that well goes dry eventually. We need to know where we're at on this thing. If that's you or this committee that set up, whoever it is, I think we need to know bottom line. It's going to cost us 2.2, 3.2, or 9.7.
Don't have any problem with what you're saying. There's a, there's a method that's commonly used in our industry, and that's to design the building, go out and get subbids, and assemble that price and say there's a guaranteed max. To do it prematurely without the design being done is something we did off a single sheet that said roughly, we think this is worth $3,40,000. And until we get that design complete and go out and bid the subtrades, we cannot tell you exactly what the new GMP is.
But we can get a guaranteed maximum bid later on, right?
Sure. That's what we're waiting on.
That's what I asked. I mean, what, at what time do you think we will be able to do that?
About three weeks after, about, about seven days after it bids.
When will that happen?
Well, if the architectural design is finished next Friday, and the MEP drags about a week beyond that, and no telling what the theater AV is going to do, it's not in our contract, but it has to be coordinated with our power and our mechanical loading, that has to get settled. We'll throw it all together, submit it for approval at the building permit, to get a building permit, same time it goes out on the street for public bidding. That usually lasts about two weeks for the subcontractors to look at the job and prepare a price and submit the price with all their particulars, exclusions, qualifications, et cetera. We take three to seven days after those come in to assemble, confirm, basically go through all the qualifications and exclusions and make sure that the job is accurately priced, not based on a subcontractor saying, well, I left out the lights, sorry. We're after 100% complete job. We will come to you after that and with a GMP, just exactly like we did off of the original drawings. We took the original drawings that you said were complete, we put them on the street and bid them in two weeks. We took about three to five days to assemble a GMP. We gave you a GMP.
Okay.
And it's the same, it's the same process that we're proposing.
But only thing, I feel like, and I'll take one blame out here for this because I voted for it, but we lost 150 grand on a set of plans that was no good. I don't want to see us do that again. I don't want to do it again. And all I'm saying is, is you don't have a line item saying, when I moved dirt in, X amount of dollars, when I fixed the wall, so much dollars. Just in case this bid comes in crazy, then how are we going to settle with you? You're saying I got a contract for 2.2. How would we settle with you?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, if you start working on it today, or Monday, let's say it's four weeks, we get this in.
Before we, well, incrementally, I'm proposing to go to work for about $300,000 and perform the work, the early package that's in the permitting stack.
How do we know it's 300,000?
Well, I'm, I guess our computer added it up. It says 300,000.
The city did, or? I just don't want to get in a big squabble if this thing comes in out of sight and out of mind and we don't have anything in the general fund.
Well, that's why you hired us, to make sure that doesn't happen.
I believe you.
So, so if I'm calculating the weeks, it's between four and five before we'd see a maximum guaranteed?
I think that's safe. Now, Councilman, the AV for the theater is the kind of the current wild card. We've, you've seen our progress here on the subcommittee.
Right.
We've gotten the structure, we've gotten most of the architectural done. We've progressed into lighting and HVAC. That has, in the last week or so, had some ups and downs and some twists and turns that we think we've got settled out. We're moving into the finishes, the carpets, the tiles, the paints, the doors, the hardware, that kind of thing. Don't expect any real surprises there, but yeah, I think that's probably four to five weeks, and we'll keep you posted along the way.
Well, and I want to highlight the scheduling that the committee has gone through. You know, I think it was November when we discussed the shortcomings of the old plan. The new floor plan was designed and, which would have been, I think, December is when that was approved by council, the floor plan itself that addressed the backstage areas, that addressed the concessions, addressed the bathrooms, and with the holidays and so forth, it's now March, so 90, 90 days to 100 days later, we are going to start, start construction. So I know Mr. Allen is talking about wasting time, but I really don't see that we have been wasting time. I think it's been quite diligent and quite efficient, actually, from what we were having to overcome. But thanks, Bill.
I, my personal opinion is that your subcommittee, the forming of that subcommittee, is the best thing you've ever done, and there's been great guidance from, from originally giving you a...
And since I've been sitting in on that, and we did, you know, I mean, we talked to Bill and just in answering your question, Councilman Allen, we, you know, he could have sat there and waited till everything to get a maximum bid, but we wanted to, correct me if I'm wrong, we wanted to get started with some of those items, which I thought was a good idea, and I think the whole committee did, to get Bill started with some things that we knew there wasn't going to be a whole lot of deviation to the costing of it, and then eventually get to our maximum bid, right?
Come up with a number as fast as possible, but in the, in the short term, get out there and show some progress, yes, sir.
I have no problem with that, Gary, or Mr. Council, but all I'm saying is that we voted this thing last year, I know, two or three times, and I'm glad we're doing it right, don't get me wrong. But three weeks or four weeks would put us at our second meeting in April, we should put it on the agenda and get it approved that night and go with it then. And it has taken a long time, and it has cost another million dollars or over, and that's frustrating to me when taxpayers come and talk to me about it and want to know, number one, why is it so high? Why is it taking so long? And I thought it was going to be built, you know, soon as the first year started, we was going to get us started on this. Well, we made some changes. So, no, I guess I am frustrated, but also want to make sure that our taxpayers, this is their dollars we're spending out there. They're not, even though I'm a taxpayer, it's y'all's dollars we're spending, and I don't want to see us go out there and spend more money than we'll ever, ever get back.
If you think you're frustrated, how do you think I feel in the fact that I voted by the St. Helen Building and we would be in there two weeks ago?
I'd bet 100 on that one. If I had a building on the square, I might have voted for it.
Any more questions for Bill?
I said if I had a building on the square, I might have voted for it, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Counsel, any more discussion on the Opera House? If not, with no recommendations made, we'll move on to the next item, which is discussing considering ordinance selecting and approving the name of the new city Granbury Dog Park. Shannon, you want to talk on that, or are you tied up over there? While she's walking across, I guess everybody knows we've got us a new dog park out there, and we're in the process of naming this place and having a big old ribbon cutting for it.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, council members, and Mr. City Manager, as you know, the marketing department joined forces with the Parks Department and the Parks Board to assist in hosting a community-wide naming contest for our new dog park. We reached out to the Granbury ISD students, vet clinics, and all members of the community. We used web, print, and social media and had a really great turnout, received so many creative names, actually over 200 names entered into the contest. We culled through the names and looked at them against the contest criteria, and the Parks Board produced the following names for your final approval tonight on one. You have those in front of you, I do believe. The first one is Granbury Bark Park. The second one is Rough Day Dog Park. And the third one is Pause to Remember Dog Park. Once the vote is completed, then we will get in contact with the winner and make sure that they're recognized on the grand opening day, April 20th, on a Saturday. And we'll also work with the Parks Department on final signage and getting ready for the big opening day.
So at this time, you'd like for the council to write down their selected name and pass it over to the left, I suppose, and get it to you, and we won't know tonight, right? Or we will know tonight? Okay. Counsel, at this time, if you'll write down your selected name, pass them down to Dee, and we'll name a new dog park. Shannon, was that 200 different people submitting, or did people was able to submit several different ones?
We, actually, we had over 200 names submitted in the contest. Some of those were duplicates, some people entered multiple times. The real count of individual names was 168.
Still a good turnout for some.
Absolutely.
Did one get more votes than the other?
They did. Lots of participation.
Okay, we have, wow, it's anonymous, it's anonymous vote here, you know, it's, we're good at this. We have selected the Granbury Bark Park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, now that we've selected the dog park, I'll entertain a motion to consider the ordinance selected and approve that name for the city of the Granbury Dog Park from the council. Do I hear a motion?
No movement.
I hear a motion from Councilman Cal... I hear a motion from Councilman Couch, uh, how, or, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Perkel. Any more discussion? No barks or anything?
Sure.
With that, I'll move to make the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That park is named. Our next item up is to consider and approve a professional service agreement with the New Line Skate Parks Incorporated to provide planning and engineering services for the design of the skate, of the city skateboard and the BMX Park project for a lump sum fee of $29,000. Uh, as you know, we had discussed this in our, uh, earlier budget, budget with the city, and, uh, we have put money back to do this, and now we are moving forward with this. I'm going to call upon Keith Cowlhand to kick this off.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, City Manager. Uh, as the Mayor said, you know, this is one, this is, this item is something we've talked about for many years, it is skate park, and we're fortunate enough to be able to budget that this year. And, uh, this is our first step into starting that project. And I will let you know that this is not a design and build project. We're going to be putting this together, designing this project, having community meetings, uh, a lot of public invited, and you guys will be invited, and putting all of our two cents worth in on this and trying to get some professional people that, the skaters, uh, some of the kids that's involved in this. We want to make this community-wide when we do this. Uh, we, we all think it's very important to get everybody's input on this. Uh, but, but one of the reasons we chose this company, when we, and, and Aaron, why don't you come up here too? Aaron McLean is our Park Superintendent, and Aaron has done a tremendous amount of footwork on this project himself. Uh, I think all of you know Aaron, he's our Park Superintendent. But one of the things we looked at is, this engineering architectural firm does nothing but skate parks, and they've done a tremendous amount of them in Texas. And they, they, they cater to municipalities. Uh, and so we, we think it's very important to somebody that, that has designed a lot of these and know the backwards and the forwards of the issues that might be involved. But Aaron, do you have anything that you'd like to talk about on this project too? I know you were heavily involved with this from day one.
If they have any questions, maybe I can answer any questions you may have. Um, you have a packet in front of you that kind of goes over some of the parks that they have, uh, designed in Texas. And they range in, in budget price, and there's, uh, one in there that was, uh, I believe, uh, over $2 million. They designed, and, uh, as small as $100,000. So, uh, you know, ours is going to run around 221 is what we're going to have in, um, for construction after, uh, a design process.
Yeah, these, these same dollars will come out of that total amount for that skate park. And, and one of the things that I mentioned at our staff meeting, you know, we're going to try to design this in a manner that we can add to this in the future if we need to. Uh, one end of that, when we do this, we'll make sure that that can happen. And, you know, a year, two years down the road, we see that this is a real success, we may want to double that size in the future. Possible grant down the road to be able to help do this. But it, it, it is, uh, some of the, some of the projects they've done is, is really pretty tremendous.
And, and, let me just say that when you look at this, yes, there's some fairly high prices here, and we have $220,000 basically left to spend. However, in this, in this park, that, some of the parks you see here, we already have the lighting and the parking, okay? And some of that money is in these numbers. It, don't you agree on that?
Yeah, yes, yes, it is.
So we already have that money, so we won't have to spend anything on parking and lighting. And so all of our $220,000 has gone directly into cement and curvatures and, and...
Everything, it's the concrete, all that portion, that's right.
And so I think we're still going to be able to ve, build a very nice park. Of course, we're going to make it where we can expand it, but it's, it's going to be a nice park.
And benches, tables, things like that, we, we, we can do ourselves.
Correct.
Uh, we've done a lot of that, actually built, built smallings and built some of those things, and Aaron's crew can do a lot of that. And as Wayne said, all of these dollars are going into the concrete and the design strictly of the skate park itself.
And we could also do the, uh, irrigation and landscaping in-house. You know, they provide us with the landscape design, we do that in-house and, uh, save that cost as well.
And, and the good thing about this, that Keith had, had mentioned earlier, is that we can continue to grow with this park as we lay it out, and I'm, I'm sure that that's the way the design is going to be to where we can add to this thing. And what our, what our intention is, is possibly to have events out there and fundraisers and, and different things, because I know there is a, 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 a big group of people that are already asking about this and that are interested in participating, bringing some out-of-town events and things like that to the skate park. So with that said, just like anything else we would do, even our dog park, you know, if we have to do some fundraisers to, to add to those, that's, that's what we, we'd like to do, and that's, and that's where we wanted to go.
And Parks Board has been behind this for the past 10 years, just for y'all's information.
Counsel, any questions for Keith, or?
Keith, you might tell, uh, people where it's going to be at, just in case they don't know.
Okay, yes, I'd be glad to. If you're familiar with our, our large city park, where all the ball fields, the soccer fields are, there's an area right there below the last soccer field, a big green area. And we kept that open for the skate park right there. And one reason for that, it's real close to us, the parking area there, it's lit up real well, and so it's got good access, no trees or anything around there. So, please, that kind of thing completes it very well. We think it's a really good location. And as it was said, we don't have to do a parking lot or lighting. We've already got that there because of the soccer fields and the ball fields. But we think it's a really good location for everyone.
My comment would be is that, uh, at the Texas Municipal League meeting recently, uh, I did stop by the New Line Skateboard, uh, booth and visited with the young man there that's, uh, responsible for these buildings. But while I was standing there, this, uh, the mayor from Cedar Park, Texas came up, and he, his, uh, their park was one of the features on the, on the board there in their booth area. And I don't know if you can see it or not, but there are people all around this park, and this was the grand opening. But what the mayor of Cedar Park told me was, is that they still have that same size of crowds every weekend around that skate park. It's an immensely popular, uh, place, and, and Cedar Park is extremely happy with the results of, of their park and what it's done to their community.
And I think Keith will tell you what, you know, because we're wanting to implement a, an amphitheater and all that out there, the benches, and so that we can have, like I say, events and have a lot of activity out there.
And it is for BMX, uh, skateboards, inline rollers, skates, those three type of things too, so. Just for everybody's information.
Thank you, Keith.
You're welcome, thank you.
Counsel, any more, uh, discussion on the skateboard part? With that, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve a professional service agreement with New Line Skate Incorporated to provide planning and engineering services for the design of the city skateboard and the BMX Park project for the lump sum fee, $29,000.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That approves. Our next item is to discuss and approve a trip by Council members and the City Manager to Washington DC to discuss the lake level issues with our senators and legislators, as well as potential emergency preparedness issues with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the NRC. Uh, I understand that a couple of Council members put this on the agenda, so if I could get one of those or two of those Council members to enlighten us in what the, uh, plan is for that trip?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. Uh, I guess for you and for the legal.
Was, were you the one to put it on the Council, is that what you're saying?
No, I was not. But, uh, I would ask, uh, I, I perceive a conflict of interest with the Mayor Pro Tem to participate.
Councilman Parsons, I've, I've reviewed that with our, uh, with our attorney, and there is no conflict of interest.
That's the reason I'm asking the question.
Well, thank you.
We reviewed the issue this afternoon, and I do not find that there's a legal conflict under Local Government Code, Chapter 171.
So with that, I'll open it up to a Council member that possibly put this on the agenda to...
I had mentioned it to Wayne, that I think it's something we should look at. I'm for one, have voted against Council people going out of, out of state many, many times. But with our situation, with our water and our lake, and what it would do to Granberry if it goes any drier, which it may do it anyway because of the drought. But under the circumstances that we've had, and Wayne could probably enlighten you more than I can, but with conversations with, uh, BRA, LUMUS, that we talked to them, I was not involved in it. I think the Mayor Pro Tem and Wayne was in that meeting.
Well, there's Sarah Carey and Mickey was on there too.
Sir, oh, Mickey was?
Yeah.
Mickey, I'm sorry. And what we heard, uh, Saturday night at the waterfront meeting, that, uh, LUMUS has signed a deal not to fight BRA on the water they're getting, I think our best bet is to go to Washington. Now, to go to Washington, before we ever go, I think we need to make sure that we have meetings set up with, like Ted Cruz, uh, Mike Conway, Bill Flores, anybody else that can get us into the right doors up there. If, if, if that can be lined up, I'm for going. If we're just going to say we're going to go up there and hope to meet them, I wouldn't do it. That'd be my motion.
Thank you, Councilman Allen.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have any more comments on this, or discussion?
Well, I would agree, I, I would agree with Mr. Allen on that, that...
You got the floor.
That, uh, you know, we need to have a, a very specific plan if we're going to spend that kind of money to go up there. And, you know, is the, is the effectiveness of all the Council members, um, is that, is that, uh, is that necessary? Or do you think that we could possibly, um, convey our concerns and, and get the benefit with, with maybe not necessarily all the Council going up there, given the, given the expense? And, you know, I have no idea, I'm, I'm the new guy here, so I'm just, um, throwing that out there.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to call upon our, our, uh, City Manager to kind of enlighten us on what the cost would be, and, and maybe you want to enlighten us what, uh, you have heard that the reasons to go into. Wayne, go ahead.
Well, you know, the cost, uh, what we've seen in the past when someone's gone there, depending on the length of stay, is around 2,000, sometimes as high as 3,000. So that's the normal cost, and I, you know...
Per, per, per person.
Right, yes. And so, um, that's the cost. Well, the reasons, uh, I think Tony Allen expressed it well, was that we perceive that we need to make our case to the NRC or whoever in our, in our legislature and senators as to what it is that's happening to our lake, and make the points that I went over on Saturday. Not everybody was there, but we basically want to, to point out that we think the emergency preparedness plan should include Lake Granberry. It was sold to the community for the last 40 years, that the reason they built the lake was because of the nuclear plant. And now, we're hearing that they don't really need our water. So, we think that we have a point, we, we've made those points. We also think that, that, uh, Luminant could be more, more proactive in the fact that, um, they are, seem to be, uh, they seem to be watching and saying, "Look, we're going to just shut down the plant if the water gets too, too low." And we're saying, it seems to us that we could be more proactive in that regard, and that we can go out and actually get more water, a long-term commitment for that, and go forward. So we're going to make all those points to the NRC and al, also to our legislators. That's primarily a summary real quick.
Now, as I, as I read this, it says, "Discuss and approve a trip." Now, as you know, and I think we pointed that out, is, uh, some time ago, that we, uh, we, uh, decided as a Council that any trip outside of the state of Texas would have to be brought to the Council and approved. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Stuart, but I, as we look at this and we say, "Well, if we was to vote and say, 'Yes, we do approve to go,'" that would merely mean that if we decide to go, and if, if it's an issue that we need to go to, to Washington, that it has already been approved through the Council. Is that the way we're reading this, Stuart? Or is this to say, we, we leave here and approve it and go pack your bags, we're going?
You're right when you amended the policy. It's in the personnel policy, and it does say now, the personnel policy of Granberry says that before a City Council member can go on a trip out of state, they have to get approval from Council prior to budget, prior to filling out the paperwork and actually expending the funds. So I think that if the Council votes tonight that you want to expend the funds to go to Washington DC, then I think that satisfies that requirement.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. It satisfies the requirement, but is the Council, or if the Council does some homework and decides that they don't want to go, it's not like we have to go.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, we just make it subject to the unapproved itinerary?
Well, suppose we could.
The policy only says that the Council has to approve out-of-state travel prior to booking that travel.
And this is something I want to roll out to the Council, and, and the reason that I asked that question, because I want to make sure that there was a timeframe in there. Because when I first heard, and I went to the same meetings that Wayne went to and all the Council, and I heard that where there's a possibility that the lake level of Granberry would affect the, uh, the safety operation of that, uh, the power plant out there, uh, that concerned me as a citizen, because if there was merely a safety issue out there, I would want, I would want to know that and to, uh, go to somebody immediately and find out, whether it be the NRC, or whether it could be to Washington, whether it be to Ted Cruz or whatever, and say, "Hey, tell me, what, what's going on here? Is this an issue or is it not?" And so that's why the Council, or that's why this has come up to the agenda, to discuss whether or not we would want to go and discuss that. But along them lines, I'd done a little investigating and found out that there is an NRC right here in Arlington, Texas, which is one of the biggest regions for the NRC. And I thought, "Well, I'm going to call them up and, and, uh, and find out some information right there real quick before I go to Washington," because they are an NRC that is locally here. And I figured that everybody had been knocking on their doors, so I called an individual up there, and he's been talking with me for a couple of days now, and he gave me some information. As a matter of fact, he's going to send me a packet and an email of what their findings are. And I think there's been one other person, meaning, I think the judge has also called him. But it's a real office out there, there's, uh, the people. As a matter of fact, I did a background and I, and I checked this guy out for his credentials, and this guy is well-qualified to work for the NRC. He's, uh, he's got a lot of connections. And so when I talked to him, he said, "Well, I'll send you this information out." And then I asked him, I said, "Well, has any of the Council or anybody from Granberry, Texas, called you and asked you about what they could do?" Because it seemed like a be, a big issue. He said, "No, Mayor, you're the only one that's called right now, other than, there was one citizen, I don't see him out there today, that has called and has, has really concerned about the NRC." So with that said, I, I said, "Well, I want to know this information, because if we don't feel good about this, we want to travel to Washington DC." He said, "Well, that would might, that probably wouldn't be a good idea, because they'd probably send you back and you'd have to go through us, and, and, and you'd have a follow-up with us and this and that." And I said, "Well, send me the information anyway, because if we don't like what you say, we may go up there anyway." So with that said, I, I, he basically told me, "If you go up there and you put a lot of mi," "Don't, don't expect to get a lot of miles out of what you hear in Washington, but you'll probably get a lot of air miles when you get back." So, um, I just want to make sure that the Council is aware of what we have in Arlington, and that if we want to go there now, or if we want to go there and pursue this with, and, and actually, he has asked me just to tell the Council or citizens out there, "If you want to go up there and talk to the NRC, he would be glad to sit down with you, the Council up here, be, be glad to sit down with him." And if we decide to go to Washington, that he would orchestrate that, and he would connect us with the, with the hookups in, in Washington, and he would help us if we chose to want him to do that. And oh, by the way, he spends a lot of time in Granberry, Texas, because he likes to stay here in our bed and breakfasts and stuff, so he really likes, uh, he stayed in two or three of them, and he really likes Granberry, Texas. So with that said, if you look that up, he, this, this, this is a real organization up there. They, I think, I think they would, they would give us a lot of good information. Counsel, I don't know if we want to pull the trigger right now and, uh, and go to Washington or, or to even spend the money. But that's why I asked the question to the attorney. If we go ahead and prove that, and then we go ahead and we do some investigating with this party up in Arlington and find out that, well, we, we're satisfied with what they said, and, and we, we've researched it, and, and, and they're either right or wrong, or whatever we decide, and then we decide to go to Washington, then so be it. So that, that's what I think we should do, and with that, I'll let the Council dwell on it, or, or we'll go ahead and vote on this.
Mayor Pro Tem, I, I agree. I know there's an NRC in Arlington, Texas, which is... Mayor pro tem, I, I agree, I know there's an NRC in Arlington, Texas, which is a lot quicker than, than Washington DC. I lived in Virginia for 18 years. And, but I also know there's a BRA in Texas that we couldn't get nothing done through and we thought every hoe was going through to get help, didn't happen. And also, most of the people here that knows the, the problems you have with BRA, I'm afraid the NRC would be just like them on a local issue, that's just my personal opinion. Secondly, whenever we got Jim Kepfer and Brian Birdball to start shaking bushes at BRA, then all of a sudden we start hearing from a, a member that lives right here in Hood County, that's never been to a meeting with water in our city, or our county for the last seven years I know of, all of a sudden he's writing articles in the paper. I'm telling you, they're, they're shaking over there, they're, they're, they're really confused what's going on because finally somebody has, has shook them a little bit and they know that we may get to bottom of this. Just like Wayne pointed out last Saturday, there's more water goes through Lake Granberry, the smallest lake has more water flowing through it than any lake. No reason why we shouldn't have water here, some people use excuse of a, of a drought. I agree with you, but not a five-foot drought, not when Lake Austin is full. It may be because it got politics down there. But I would say, back to my original motion, that I make a motion for the council, if you don't wanna go, you don't have to go, it's up to you, entirely up to you. Once you go, we can post it as a, as a meeting. Go to Washington if we line up the people to get us in the right doors. And I would leave, in that motion, I would say that Wayne would be the one that would line us up. And let's get this over with, you can look at it and say, well, it's $10,000. And y'all heard me, well, go the way I was picking on poor Bill up here, which I love, $10,000's a lot of money. But I'm telling you, if we lose the lake, each one of us out there can lose more than $10,000. I'm telling you, your property value's gonna go down, your taxes are gonna go up and, and the city's tax revenues are gonna go down. We got a major, major problem. And this election year for me, and it's, it's a tough call for me to do this, but I'm telling you, if we don't do it and save the lake, we're in trouble. We go up there and don't save the lake, you're gonna vote me out in November. That's my motion.
And, and Councilman Allen, he, he covered a lot of issues that actually aren't on the agenda here, but I mean, that, that is, that is part of why we're doing what we wanna do. And all I'm asking is that we give a local an opportunity and we also give, uh, our, our rape, our representatives and stuff an opportunity to, to hook us up or to, to set us up with the, the right people before we go and, and pull the trigger to spend 12 to 13, probably 15,000 dollars. Because I'm sure every council member would wanna go up there, that's a, that's a nice trip.
I, I second that motion. Uh, I've been pretty clear on, on the willingness to travel, to seek help from other entities, uh, throughout my career here on the council. And as I recall, we've visited with the local FAA or Federal Aeronautics Administration about helping us fund up our airport. And lo and behold, they decided they'd do that after we took a trip to Washington and talked to the people at the FFA, FAA in Washington. So I would move that we approve this.
So, uh, so council, Councilman, uh, Councilman Par- Parsons, are you making a motion to, uh?
I'm seconding the motion.
Cause you're seconding Councilman Allen's motion. Okay. Any more discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, um, given what's at stake, uh, 10 or $10,000 is, is relatively, uh, low in comparison to what, um, is at stake. And that I would concur with both Mr. Allen and Mr. Parsons, that, um, if we're not up there, uh, as long as the itinerary has been approved and vetted, that, uh, in fact, it's something we should approve.
Mr. Perkel, you're left.
Without the door, hopefully, we have had this chance for so long. Another period that people had, we've been brought up all this time, we're not needing water in the future too. It's not just the nature of our planet up there, it's not our home, not our hope, it's that we need to get it straight, how much water we actually have, come out of that lake, while everybody's in a time frame question. Real important thing, and it's been mentioned in weeks, we've gotta have that water in the future, who has the water is gonna be the, the city that grows. We've got it, we gotta keep it.
As a councilman, one last statement, I'll, I, I would say that I, and I have done work already, I do wanna, I do wanna investigate the NRC and that's what I'm doing right now in Arlington, Texas. Uh, with, like I said, I, he hasn't heard from anybody else, not even in the community. So that leads me to believe that there's some people don't think we're serious about this, but I am, I'm serious about it. I'm serious about if there's an NRC issued out there, I wanna go find out about it right now. And so I'm hoping this, you know, the, the gentleman up there will give me enough information, but if we wanna vote on that right now, then, uh, there's, we'll, we'll do that. So without that.
One, one more question.
Mr. Perkel.
I've been here probably as long as, longer, most of it, but several, several years ago, they, they were trying to figure out another evacuation way to get out of here. And basically folks, we, you know, if it goes, if it, if it goes, we're going with it, because we don't have enough evacuation routes to get out of this place. And they've looked at that, so they do know that there is a possibility of something like this happening. But I still feel, I'm, I'm like, I, I think we need to have the door open for us and we know who to talk to, because if you don't know who you gotta talk to up there, it's not worth it, it's paying your will.
So we have a motion and a second, and let me just read the motion for the turn here, so it said, was, the motion is to discuss and approve a trip. So the motion is to approve a trip by the council members for the city manager and/or the city council to discuss lake level issues with the senators and legislators as well as potential emergency preparedness issues with the NRC Regulatory Commission. If the city manager lines these up in advance and is approved by the council.
It's gonna be approved, aye.
But we're putting that, we're putting that on there if.
I'm not, I'm not changing my motion over there. My mayor, my motion was that we would let Wayne line it up. And the rest of my motion was that if they didn't wanna go, you don't have to.
And, and that's what I said, Councilman Allen, I just, I just added what you just said.
Okay.
So that that's all covered.
Okay.
Stay with me now.
We read it one more time?
Okay, no, I'm not. We were, the discussion was to approve a trip for the council members of the city ma- and the city manager to Washington DC to discuss the lake level issues with our senator and legislators as well as the potential emergency preparedness issues with the NRC. And to, and to confront the city manager with the meetings, that he sets the meetings lined up in advance for this travel. Okay?
And, and if the council does not wanna go, a council member, they don't have to.
Exactly. Do, I had a motion, I had a second, no more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. I'm a nay. That motion approved, uh, I'm the only nay. Thank you, Dee. With that, that concludes our city council meeting with no further discussion. The city ma- council meeting is concluded.